The January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off the electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Up to thirty minutes we provided for the individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action on, you must first complete a P E T form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 P M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District Two.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Swannen, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Gay Street, Principal of Donnellan Elementary School, please come forward for introduction of the state Elementary Hispanic Teacher of the Year who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
I am pleased to announce to you and present to you Ms. Maria Gonzalez, Florida State's Educate Hispanic Teacher of the Year. We are so proud to have her as part of our staff, but more importantly, that she stretches the lives of all of our students each and every day. Maria.
Good evening. First, I have to say that I'm thankful because of my faith to my Lord Jesus Christ, my husband, my family, for believing that I can accomplish anything. Without them, I would have been able to do what I have accomplished. And like Ms. Street said, on October second, I was presented with the Hispanic Heritage Month Award of Excellence in Education for the elementary school category for the entire state of Florida. And this award has been the greatest honor that I could have received. I'm grateful for Ms. Street, her nomination, Governor Rick Scott, Lieutenant Governor Carlos Lopez-Cantara, who I had the privilege of meeting and learned that he is the first Hispanic Lieutenant Governor for the entire state of Florida. So that was a great honor for the people from Volunteer Florida. They were an amazing group and all the parties involved in the nomination and selection process and the award ceremony. It was magnificent. But now it's time to look beyond the award, beyond the recognition. And so I've been doing a lot of reflecting on my early years growing up. I was born in Cuba and I came to the United States when I was four years old. Language was a barrier. My parents were seventy, they're now in their seventies, and they were hardworking people. They instilled good principles and values in my brother and I, and they always said that if I believed in myself and I studied hard and I worked hard, I could achieve anything that was possible. And it was a wonderful opportunity, and I've never forgotten those words. I grew up, I graduated from school, I met my husband George, we got married, we started a family, and I became a born again Christian during our third year of marriage. And through faith, we became very involved in ministry and working with youth that was involved at risk and in gangs and violence and even within the church. Parents did not know what they needed to do with their youngsters, and they tried to reach them and they couldn't. So what we did was we constructed our lessons based on their upbringing, their experiences, and connected with real life experience, connected the Bible, and made it a meaningful relationship and experience with these youngsters. And so they were able to relate with the word, with their faith, what they were going through, and a lot of these young men and women changed their lives. Today, they are phenomenal people. Back then, they went off, some won scholarships to magnet schools for their high school years, others went off to college, some went off to the military. And they didn't realize this, but while I taught Sunday School, I realized the importance of teaching, and that's what helped me to become a teacher. They didn't know they inspired me. They thought I was inspiring them, but in return, they inspired me to pursue my career. They were my inspiration. Last November, our fourth graders went on a field trip to St. Augustine. And we inspire people more than we know, not just coworkers, students, everyone we come in contact with. Our children got back from the field trip, and a young man entered my classroom as I was dismissing students and they were being signed out. And he says, "Mrs. Gonzalez, do you remember me?" And of course I did, so I said, I called him by name. And he said, he stayed around for a few minutes, talked about school, things that were difficult for him, things he was having trouble with, and we chatted for a little bit, and I told him that I believed in him, that I knew he was going to do fine, that I expected an invitation to his graduation. And before leaving, he turned around and he said, "Mrs. Gonzalez, you are a great teacher." And I said to him, "Every teacher is a great teacher." He said, "Yes, but you believe in me." And then he said, "You and Mr. Victor were the best teachers I ever had." He said, "And I miss elementary school because of that." Those were my best years. And so as an educator, knowing that my words, my actions, what I say, not just inspire church students, but the kids I teach every day, those I see in the classroom, that's the greatest reward I can receive. And so our actions speak a lot louder than we can imagine. Our words go further than we know. Ephesians four twenty-nine says, "No rotten talk should come from your mouth, but only what is good for the building up of someone in need, in order to give grace to those who hear." I also love music, and the Christian singer Toby Mack has a song called "Speak Life," and some of the lyrics in there say, "To raise your thoughts a little higher, to use your words to inspire, that joy will fall like rain when you speak life with the things you say." And so I know as a teacher that sometimes it could be overwhelming. Sometimes we have obstacles and challenges we face, but one thing I know for certain is that God created us with a purpose. We are here for a reason, and we need to fulfill that purpose. And our purpose as educators is to continue to build, to continue to work together, to continue to use words that encourage our students to believe in themselves, that they can achieve anything, because they are the future leaders of America. Thank you.
I'm Natalie Beasley, elementary student at Donnellan Elementary. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on, Mrs. Gonzalez, we just want to congratulate you and ask you to keep up the good work, and your prayers were very inspiring, so I can understand why your students, you know, love listening to you. Thank you. Does any other board member wish to comment?
Thank you for doing such a great job and keep up the good work.
It's always a pleasure to see hardworking teachers really reflect the community in which they represent. And again, I'm looking at all of you, and the Street, for bringing a whole contingent of your talent here, and I just want to say, job well done, congratulations.
I just want to say thank you for your dedication, and just like the Toby Mack song that you were speaking about, keep speaking life into your students. They are so blessed to have you.
Stacy.
You never know when the next president of the United States down the road in twenty years is going to be sitting in your classroom, and you may have made the difference in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, board. Mr. Superintendent.
Board, with the exception of item P H twelve, which has been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Seven minutes.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are those in, are there any discussions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November twentieth, two thousand and fourteenth administrative briefing and work session, the November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen school board meeting C O P. November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen school board meeting leasing corp C O P. The November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen school board meeting, and the December the ninth, two thousand and fourteen school board meeting. May I have a motion?
Seven minutes.
Seconded by Mrs. King, and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any additions or corrections to the minute? Any discussion? May I have the vote, please? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, and Nick Blazer, Public Education Foundation President, are here to recognize three new business partners.
Well, welcome, and, well, thank you for having me. I'm sure you'd welcome me to your own meeting, should I? Good evening, board members. Chairman Boynton, good evening Superintendent Tomlin. Mr. Blazer and I are always excited to be here, because you know we bring good things and good tidings on behalf of our schools, and we are excited to share with you the ways the Public Education Foundation is connecting children, classrooms, and community. So we do have three presentations tonight, so we're going to dig down here, because we're going to do these out of order. I think, okay. So first, I would like to call Mr. David Ellers, the principal of Bellevue Middle School, and Mrs. Petchy from Petchy Orthodontics. And I would also like to say that Mr. Ellers serves as the middle school principal liaison on the board of directors for the Public Education Foundation. And we know that Petchy Orthodontics has been involved with the Public Education Foundation for some time and a great supporter of our coupons for education program, the largest fundraiser that we do, and our school's largest fundraiser as well. So now we're excited to have them working with us in another capacity. Mr. Ellers.
I just wanted to thank the board for approving this business partnership. We had formerly had teacher shared answers who had served for years at Bellevue Middle School, I think since the school opened basically for over twenty years as business partner. And when they finally just decided that they needed to support some other organizations and move their energies a little bit, we were worried, but Petchy Orthodontics stepped right up, and Mrs. Petchy was a great liaison for helping get that in place.
What do you like to say? We're grateful for the opportunity. I'm sorry Paul Petchy couldn't be here, he had a dental meeting, but we're just happy to support our children's school. We have three children at Bellevue Middle, so.
Petchy, before you leave, I just want, I wanted to say that you have three beautiful children, they're triplets, and I was honored as a principal of Shady Hill Elementary to have them all the way through elementary school, and now they're in eighth grade. They're taller than me, it's really humbling. They're beautiful kids. Thank you. Okay, and next I'm going to call with, call up here, Mrs. Jennifer Beck, principal of Saddlewood Elementary School, and Allison Campbell from Jenkins Auto Group, their brand new business partner. So I know that Jenkins Auto Group has already been busy working with Saddlewood Elementary. I'm going to let Mrs. Beck tell you a little bit about that.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening, and I just can't thank Jenkins Auto Group enough for their support at Saddlewood Elementary School. We've already begun to forge a wonderful relationship. Since I've been at Saddlewood, we have not had a business partner, and so it was wonderful when I got the call in the fall, it said, "We have a fabulous group for you." We had a, an event in December where we welcomed about five hundred parents and we served all of our children, and Jenkins Auto Group came in and they helped serve, and so they wore hairnets and they wore their gloves, and they were serving and did a wonderful job. So thank you so much to the board for approving this, and thank you for the relationship that we've already begun to build, so.
Allison? Sure.
Yes, thank you so much. I definitely have an all-new appreciation for the lunch ladies. That's a, that was a real experience that we will never forget. We all had a wonderful time doing that. And this is just another way that Jenkins Auto Group with the Mazda store, the Accura store, Hyundai, and also our Jenkins Collision Center is supporting our community. We're really excited. We've been supporting the Public Ed Foundation for a long time, and we're really happy to have this partnership with Saddlewood.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Step over there for a quick picture. Sorry. Was that clear with the call? As Allison said, yes, Jenkins Auto Group's been working with the Public Education Foundation, sponsoring events and doing things with us for quite a while, and I think they've got some more surprises up their sleeve that hopefully we'll be able to unveil to you in just a little bit. And now last, but certainly not least, from South Ocala Elementary School, we have Principal Lisa Coy at her business partner, Family the Lorax. All right, we've got Mr. and Mrs. Lorax, and Hayla Lorax, who is a kindergarten student at South Ocala. And this is Triple Crown Trailers, and we are excited that they are our brand new business partner with South Ocala. Ms. Coy?
Good evening, board members. I'd like to say thank you for allowing Triple Crown to come onboard with South Ocala. We actually have pulled in parents from our school within the community, and we are so proud of them. They have worked with our, our kids on campus, Ms. Lorax comes in and volunteers, and they've also donated their trailer for our Christmas float. So we are so pleased to have the Lorax on campus, and not only that, but as our new business partners. This is our second business partners at South Ocala. We have Ford Orthodontics still under our belts, and we continue to seek other parents within our community to join onboard with us. So the Lorax, thank you for taking this challenge and walk with us. And of course, they have a little one here that we hope we get many years of investment with her.
Mr. Lorax, would you like to say something?
I would just like to thank you for the opportunity and look forward to a long-term relationship with South Ocala, and thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Christian, could you send some of those to me, please? Thank you. Okay, board members, that ends my presentation for this evening, but I think I'm scheduled at your next several, several, several board meetings, so I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zanetti. Before individuals begin their presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record before you begin to address the board. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this, of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you do plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the new procedures that the school board has adopted. Copies are available to you from Mr. Christian on one of the front tables. Audiovisual presentations are permitted, if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting, to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parent or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families, is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Brenda, could you call out for a speaker, please?
Mr. Randy Howe.
Randy Howe, fifty-six, Hickory Loop, Ocala, Florida, three four four seven two. And I apologize in advance for the very bright colors that you see in the audience that some of our teachers are wearing tonight. We wanted to make sure not only that you heard the speech that I'm giving to you all, but that you actually visually saw us as what we want to be seen. Recently, a group of young educators formed a Marion County chapter of Florida Young Remarkable Educators, also known as FIRE. This group was founded at the statewide level through a grant written nearly two years ago by the Florida Education Association and supported locally by the M E A. FIRE was created to attract and retain young educators by providing them with an outlet in which they can collaborate directly with their peers, advocate for their profession, and foster community involvement to benefit students and their families. FIRE presents the district with an opportunity to retain young educators in Marion County and entice future young educators to choose our county over others. We're in an unfamiliar situation here. We have increased, increased student population, the upcoming retiring of many veteran teachers, and the recent passing of the one mil referendum. Marion County is likely to see a surge of young educators in the near future, and already has. This is a much different environment than we were in two years ago, when unfortunately many young teachers were laid off due to statewide budget cuts. In order for Marion County to reestablish its perception as a young educator-friendly school system, we believe that the school board and district leadership must demonstrate that they are committed to making this a reality. Young educators in Marion County must feel that they are valued and respected, and that their opinion is recognized with high regard. FIRE is in the process of gathering data on what young educators need and, and/or want in order to become more effective in the classroom, as well as what it will take to keep young educators in Marion County. This may include more relevant professional development, equitable distribution of technology in classrooms across the district, and the ability to devote more time to actual instruction. Perhaps building a better mentor system similar to some other counties where rookie teachers have full-time mentors would also ensure that the young educators that we have stay here. Simply put, we are here in Marion County because we believe in our profession, and we want progress to continue. We don't want other counties luring our young educators away, just as we are rebuilding our image as a destination for young educators. Over the next few months, you will be hearing more about Marion County FIRE and what we have to offer our community. Several of us plan on attending a winter leadership conference event in Jacksonville next month, sponsored by the Florida Education Association. It is FIRE's hope that we can build a relationship with all public education stakeholders, especially those right here in Marion County. We have already scheduled a meeting with Superintendent Tomlin later this month, and eagerly await opportunities to meet with other leaders that are ready and willing to show their support for Marion County's young remarkable educators. By supporting an initiative that focuses on young educators that are fresh to the profession and filled with enthusiasm and passion for teaching, students will be the ultimate beneficiaries. They will receive lively, exciting instruction that will be sure to keep them engaged and motivated to learn day in and day out. We look forward to seeing the FIRE spread throughout Marion County and watching our students and community grow as a result. We did bring some FIRE t-shirts for you all. I apologize, we only brought five, so Mr. Lake and Ms. Plotcutter, we will get you one. But we wanted to share these shirts with you, so that hopefully you can either display it proudly or wear it around the community and begin the conversation about how important our young educators are in Marion County and why it's so important to keep them here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I just want to, I just want to say that it's, it's, it's really a joy to have you have this organization formed, and I think that it's going to be something that we can all maybe, I hope we can all, you know, work together, because one of the main things that concerns all of us is the retaining of our teachers and to make sure that our children receive a quality education. And just to have an organization that we can actually go to and maybe you can pull some data from you or something, that would be so helpful for our county, so I really appreciate that so much. And, does any other board member?
I do. I know you've mentioned mentors, and I really believe that we need to work on a strong mentorship program. We used to have one, but I, I don't, I don't know that it's in full force right now, and I know our new teachers, and even our second-year teachers, need that support wherever they are, so I plan to work on that to see if we can help you with that in any way else that we can help you, let us know, okay?
Ms. King, do you have anything to say?
I'm just going to piggyback off Ms. Ely a little bit, and I agree that our county, we do need mentors, because we have great teachers, and we also have excellent and great veteran teachers. So not only should we just mentor and look into our young teachers, but I also feel that we should have the professional development which you spoke about, even for our veteran teachers, and get some great mentoring in for our new beginners. Great job.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
It's always one, when we talk about teachers, we know that teachers are the backbone of our school system, and bringing in fresh blood and true, our fresh ideas is so important. My son is in that, in your group, and hopefully I can convince him he needs to come to Ocala. And so I'm looking forward to, looking forward to the opportunity to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Stacy, did you have a? I, I think it's exciting, because Mrs. King was just talking about this the other day, and how important it was. And it's interesting that you just came in right on time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Basti, and I live at forty-six fifty Southeast Twenty-Fourth Street, Ocala. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Tomlin. First of all, and for the record, I love my job as library assistant at Maplewood Elementary. And by the way, I've been there twenty-two years at the one school, and I love it. I have become a better person for working for the school system, and I appreciate being able, or being employed by it. I love and enjoy the students, and I work with the most amazing teachers and staff. They are dedicated and hardworking people. They are just good people. They go above and beyond every day, expected to do more with less. Please consider giving raises to us. Yes, I can't believe that I'm standing before the school board asking for that, but sometimes you have to do what you have to do. Take care of your employees this way, please. We are working diligently every day, taking care of our community's children. We are an asset to the school system and community. I know you have a budget. You know how it is, but it has been too many years going without for way too many of us. We deserve your consideration in this matter. Please take care of us. We make it happen on our end. Please make this happen on yours. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming and, and, thank you for sharing with us. Thank you. Ms. Plotcutter, does any board have a comment? Ms. Plotcutter?
Mr. Chris Alzabala.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Superintendent, board members. I hope you had a great holiday season, and I wish you all a very happy new year. I hope you had a great holiday season, and I wish you all a very happy New Year. Tonight, I would like to speak with you regarding the New Year. Specifically, I'd like to talk about New Year's resolutions. New Year's resolutions date back over four thousand years, and according to Wikipedia, is a tradition in which a person makes a promise to do an act of self-improvement or something slightly nice beginning on the New Year's Day. I come before you tonight to ask this board to make a New Year's resolution, one that can have a profound impact on your employees as well as the students that we serve. I challenge this board to a New Year's resolution that makes your people a priority. One of the primary ways you can make your people a priority is through contract negotiations. For years, the district and the MEA have had a fractured relationship at the bargaining table. That is a shame because I believe we both can find common ground on the majority of issues facing our school district. However, once again, it is into the second semester of a school year, and we have yet to settle our contract. To put it in perspective, last year, MEA had a full-book contract year in which we restructured the way we paid our teachers, and we negotiated dozens of language changes to our master contract. This year, we basically have two issues: compensation and a reopener of both sides' choice. Why then is this process taking so long? In our minds, it is simple. You haven't made your people a priority. As a result, we will settle later than we did last year. That is, if we don't go to impasse. Tonight, you will adjourn after this meeting and go into executive session. We hope you intend to have discussions that will demonstrate that you are willing to make your people a priority. Some facts that you should consider supporting making us a priority are the following, and there are just a few. Over the past decade, the turnover rate for teachers with three or more years' experience is almost six percent higher than the state average. Over the past six years, the average teacher salary in Marion County has stagnated at roughly ninety-two point nine percent of the statewide average, despite our teachers in Marion averaging almost one more year or over one more year of teaching experience. Beginning teachers can drive a few miles south to Sumter County and make over two thousand dollars more, and a second-year, highly-effective teacher in Sumter County will make the same salary as a highly-effective teacher in Marion with over ten years' experience. And finally, when teachers in Marion County send us a detailed salary comparison that demonstrates a past practice of devaluing teachers, and Madam Chair, I'm going to give you that copy that I received from a teacher, well, you get the picture. The MEA will be waiting to hear some good news tomorrow morning. We will be ready to go to the table, day, night, or even over the weekend. We are waiting to hear your New Year's resolution. Every one of you at one time or another touted your experience and the value that it brings to our mission. What about our teachers' experience and the value that that brings? As stated above, New Year's resolutions are all about self-improvement. Let's do that act of self-improvement for our school district. Let's start this New Year off right by making our people a priority. Thank you.
Has any comment from any board member?
Ms. Carolyn Torrey?
Good morning, Board, or good afternoon, Board. My name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at twelve oh two Southeast Fourteenth Avenue, and yesterday I attended the legislative session, meeting with the six legislators over at Sea of College. Now, one of the topics that was brought up was the need for PICO funds, and my concerns are the Auditor General's findings of two thousand and twelve, and I don't believe Kelly King, Nancy Stacy, or Carol Eli have had an opportunity to review that because that was prior to their term. But I do know that Angie Voighten and Bobby James are fully aware because they voted to defy some of the Auditor General's findings. The Auditor General had some questions about, I guess it was towards the beginning, first of all, one of them was teachers' pay, and the Auditor General's findings also had some questions about what was happening to the school repair funds. I'm going at lib, I haven't reviewed that report in a while. So what I'm asking about, as we're asking for more PICO funds from the state, I want to know what happened to the audit of what happened to the funds. Now, I do realize that Mr. Tomlin has made major changes in the structure since he's come on board, but I wanted to find out if anybody has audited to find out what happened to the funds and the bidding. Do we have an audit of that? Mr. Tomlin?
I'm not aware of it.
Would you want me to send you a copy?
I'm not sure what you're asking for.
I'm asking you, did anybody review the Auditor General's findings about expenditures of funds? Specifically, I'm addressing the repairs on the schools and the PICO funds.
This board knows that the district is audited each year, every third year by DOE, and for two years running by a private firm, and we, they know about the audit. We have a copy of that audit, yes, ma'am.
But do you do an internal audit to find out what they were discussing?
I do not know, Ms. Torrey.
Okay. Is there a possibility if somebody could research that and get me a copy if you have?
I will ask the board chair if she would like me to do that, yes.
Because one of the things I have concerns about is a building that I know since nineteen twenty-four is still without air conditioning and heat, and this was brought up in front of the state legislatures yesterday. And you know where my question is about the fourth-grade room, and you know what my questions were about the gymnasium?
No, I don't.
Well, you ought to know because my son collapsed over the gymnasium, and that's why they filed lawsuit against me.
I'm not sure this is on the agenda tonight. Ms. Boyd?
Ms. Torrey, is there anything else?
Because my son's...
Torrey, if you could hold on. You want us to research PICO fundings for a school. Can you name the school, please?
The school that my son attended in the fourth grade was Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary.
Okay. And what grade is your sign-in this year?
Osceola is the other school that had a question about the nineteen...
Ma'am, what grade is your sign-in this year?
That is irrelevant. There's children that are attending the school since nineteen twenty-four. I think they should at least have heat and air and a gymnasium that many, that I'm understanding that more than my child was not the only child that collapsed in that gym.
Okay, so if I can understand what you're asking, you're saying you want us to research to see whether or not there's heating and air at N.H. Jones and Osceola?
Right. Now, part of the deposition that I found when I questioned...
Ma'am, that deposition has nothing to do with what you're asking us to do.
It is relative to the heat and air issues. The heat and air issues that were discussed in there, do you know where we found your custodian?
Ma'am, I want to be able to help you, but if you are, you're going and diverting back in time...
Well, nineteen twenty-four is a long time for it not to be addressed.
I think it has been addressed, but we will find out for you, and I will definitely make sure that someone gets the information to you and...
I appreciate that.
And apprise the entire board of the findings, okay?
The other thing that we found when we went for deposition of one of your employees as a custodian, the police reports found him exposing himself to other little girls, and that's a police report.
That has nothing, ma'am.
I will send you the report.
Okay, we request that from you then. Thank you.
And he was kept on the school board...
Thank you, ma'am.
...for two years afterwards. I have a problem with that.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Hoteling, and I live at twenty-three ninety-one Southwest Seventh Avenue in Ocala, Florida. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the school board and Superintendent Tomlin. Tonight, interestingly enough, I want to talk to you about the food service industry and some interesting parallels to education. My first career was in food service. I started washing dishes at the Holiday Harbor Restaurant when I was twelve years old. I was a busboy, a bartender, a waiter, a host, and a cook, and at one time or another I did it all in the restaurant business. And I remember back when I was a new teacher. I was running from one student to the next. This one needs a pencil. This one needs a ruler. This student doesn't understand. Another one isn't happy with their efforts, and so on. And I thought, holy smokes, this is just like waiting on tables. And I really can't imagine a better preparation for teaching than the service industry. It teaches you patience, to juggle responsibility, to think on your feet, and to communicate with a wide variety of people. And you never know what the next table will bring. It's never the same day twice, just like in school. Each and every table has its own challenges. A Hispanic family is having difficulty understanding the menu. This child is allergic to nuts. Do we fry with peanut oil? And of course, as a waiter, you do your very best to please your customer because just like in teaching, you're on a pay-for-performance salary schedule. The tip you receive has a direct relationship to the service you deliver. So it's an interesting analogy and one I think we can learn from. Because today, I'm really here to talk about compensation, pay-for-performance. In the restaurant business, you get a good tip when you do a good job, and there are exceptions. There's always the cheapskates, the bad tippers. Sometimes they don't believe in tipping. In other cases, they spend all their money on the food and never have enough left over for their service provider. But whatever the case is, you always remember those bad tippers and the good ones. When you get a great tip from a customer, the next time they come in, you give them excellent service. And those cheapskates and those poor tippers, well, you grow to resent them. And while you must serve them, they really get the very minimum. And the truth is, we're all human beings, and when we receive positive reinforcement, we react positively. It reinforces good performance. It's simple, really. In the service business, you often get what you pay for. And so it is with teaching. You're going to get what you pay for. If you want a dedicated workforce that cares about the job they do and is willing to go the extra mile as teachers must do, if you want people to commit to a thirty- or forty-year career in this county, you're going to need to live up to the commitment you've made to them. Teachers have delivered over and over again. Now it's your turn. I challenge this board to put salaries at the beginning of the budget discussion, not at the end. Don't be the customer that spends all the money on food and doesn't take care of the service provider. Other counties in Florida, other cities and counties in this nation are finding ways to accomplish this, ladies and gentlemen. We all know teachers are underpaid for the important work they do. I'm not even going to get into that. I challenge this board and our superintendent to change this. Teachers are ready to serve. Join us and become our partners in this important work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Edward Wilson?
Ed Wilson, sixty-nine sixty Southwest Hundred and Fifty-Fifth Street, Dunn Ellin. It's good to see all of you again. I hope you had a wonderful Christmas and a very safe and happy New Year. It was very disturbing to hear that Marion County is once again being fined for not meeting Classroom Size Amendment. We were all assured during the budget workshops that we would meet the requirements. In addition to that, you received an increase in revenue of eighteen and a half million dollars this year as compared to last year, but not one additional teacher was hired. This is inexcusable. I believe the board, the superintendent, and the citizens of Marion County deserve an honest and thorough explanation as to why we did not meet the Class Size Amendment and exactly where the eighteen and a half million dollars is being spent. Is everything that all that money is being spent on more important than putting teachers in the classroom and abiding by the Florida Constitution? I doubt it. The majority of the board at the time and the administration refused to hire teachers because, and I quote, "If we hire teachers now, the public won't pass the tax." And now you're being fined almost sixty-two thousand dollars for not meeting the Class Size Amendment? All of this is unacceptable. The people or person responsible for the portion of the staffing plan that puts teachers in a classroom must be held accountable. There is a serious lack of accountability in government, and it is long past time for that to change. So I ask you respectfully to please investigate why we did not meet the Classroom Size Amendment and how the eighteen and a half million dollars is being spent, to report your findings to the citizens of Marion County in an honest and thorough manner, and to hold the people or person responsible for these violations of the public trust and the Florida Constitution accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoteling.
My name is Angela McCants. I reside at two-three-five-one Southwest Seventh Street, Ocala, Florida, three-four-four-seven-one. I'm standing here because I'm representing Pontiana Heights. Our children, as you know, our children are our future, and their safety is most important to us, and we need a safe place for our children to play and congregate. After several months of discussion with various public and private entities, the most likely and most favored solution is to have Dr. N.H. Jones open for neighborhood children during school daylight hours. Ocala Parks Department is more than willing to participate and help with any maintenance issues. They have been an avid supporter of opening school grounds. What are the main concerns and solutions about playground access? Safety and security. The playground is only accessible during daylight, non-school hours, and amended weekend We would like to place school on the police patrol. It already exists. Neighborhood and city playground monitors are a good use of our crossing guards, for example, and twenty-four-hour surveillance by cameras on the city-provided Pontiana Heights Wi-Fi network. So how can we make this happen? We have to support the Wi-Fi committee and their petition. This will provide an extremely low-cost, twenty-four-hour surveillance camera security solution. This is for your consideration, and we do need our children safe. I see daily, I have no little ones of my own, but I consider all children, no matter where they're from, what they look like, race, creed, or color, my children. Everybody wants them to be safe. I see them running in the streets playing. I live on a sort of a cul-de-sac, and cars come careaming through while the kids are playing in the middle of the street, and I want them to be safe as well. I'm sure everybody does, and this would be a great place for them to play safely and be monitored during those hours. And this is for your consideration, and a petition will be provided at a later date to you and to the city. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Stacey?
Hi, and apologies for coming. That's been a concern of mine for many years. Because I've looked at the parks that those children have access to, they have to cross a floor lane. There's lots of things, but they have to cross a floor lane. And someone that I happen to know over in that area shared with me that she has actually seen children hanging on the fence, looking at the playground.
Yeah.
Because they can't get in there. I am one hundred percent in support of this, and I would like to ask Madam Chairman to, I don't know whether we need to talk about it on a workshop agenda, I don't know, whatever you think, you always make the best decisions about those kind of things, but I think this is long, long overdue.
It is.
That school is in the neighborhood, and even if the city puts in some fencing or something to keep the children out of the hallways or something like that, so we don't have, you know, vandalism or that sort of thing, but, and like you said, if the city will work with us... But, and like you said, if the city will work with us, I know I am for it 100%.
Thank you.
I will do absolutely anything I can do to help you move forward with this.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. What days and times are you talking about to open the playground?
These are...
Like the weekends and the after-school?
Well, amended weekends and after-school hours, daylight time.
I remember when playgrounds belonged to our children, and now everything's closed off. And I too agree with Ms. Stacy. We need to open it up to our neighborhood children.
Yeah.
Do you have any comment, Mr. James or Ms. Pink?
I know we need to work on that. And if we really want to make this happen, let's do that. But I know that we have to do some investigation and...
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm for it, too. Let's look at what we got. Okay, when I say that, I know we need to put an area in there in reference for the kids to play.
Okay.
They have a place. Okay, by the same token, I really feel that this should be more of a cooperative effort now. Because we are saying something, by the same token, I know that the city should be involved with this as well. Have you had an opportunity to talk with anyone at the city?
Well, actually, I've been...I had several operations. I've been sick. This was presented to me at my last meeting at Ponteana Heights Homeowners Task Force by the committee there. They made a committee for this special thing. But I haven't been able personally to speak to them, but others at Ponteana Heights that are members of Ponteana Heights Task Force has. And they said that they are willing to do something, but I can provide you with the information and who they spoke with.
Okay. Who normally worked with that area in terms of that now? I know we have the boys and girls club over there and all of that stuff. But who usually worked down at the auditorium with that, do you know?
At Dr. N.H. Jones...
No, down at the auditorium.
Oh, I don't know.
I'll look into it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Superintendent?
Thank you again, Ms. McCants. Mr. Christian is here.
Thanks for your time.
I do not see Mr. Gregory in the audience. But I'd like for Mr. Christian to do that. Ms. McCants, if you would, I'd like to have Mr. Christian introduce you to Mr. Chester Gregory.
Okay.
He can begin the court session.
Oh, great. Great, wonderful.
And handle the various categories.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if you're finished and the board is finished with questions or comments, if you would go with Mr. Christian, we'll start that process right now.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Ms. Blackadder?
Marie McCormick.
My name is Marie McCormick. I reside at 2013 Northeast 49th Street, Ocala, Florida. I am the proud president of Marion Essential Support Personnel. Good evening, board members, Mr. Tomlin, Mr. Lake. I hope you all had a wonderful winter break, and I am so happy to see fire here. Great speeds, you guys rock 'em. What could be better than to support the young educators? I'm just really glad you're here. In November, I received a proclamation from you celebrating the contributions of over 1,300 essential support personnel. These hard-working people, making some making only $15,000 per year, are suffering to make ends meet. Our highly qualified paraprofessionals are paid on an average of about 89% of the statewide average for the job they do, yet continue to work shoulder to shoulder throughout the district with technical specialists, custodians, and administrators who make well above the state average for their jobs. I am asking you tonight to do some real soul-searching as we weigh the question of how to pay a living wage to these loyal employees who have been coming to work without a contract since the beginning of this school year. ESPs pay the same family insurance premiums as those who make three to four times their annual wage. Many of these people voted for the one mil referendum in November. They voted to tax themselves to help the children of this district. I am asking you to help them. I realize that we are all in the business of education. I realize that we have a budget. I also realize that good business has to take care of its employees, that happy employees are productive employees, and that favorable working conditions enhance employee satisfaction and productivity. And we all know that happiness and productivity are highly contagious. What a great thing to catch. Our demands are modest. Our demands can be met. Please take care of your employees. We are, after all, citizens of the same county. We live here, we work here, we shop here, we vote here, our children go to school here, and we would really like to be able to afford to continue to live here. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Christine Touchton, and I live at 920 Northeast 30th Street, Ocala, Florida, 34471. And the reason why I'm coming before you today is frankly, I didn't know so many people were going to be talking about salaries, but that's exactly what I want to discuss with you. There are many teachers that teach here in this county, and they could be single people without another spouse or anyone to help them. They could be single and taking care of parents, or they could be a one-family income where they're taking care of family and children. And when you have the salaries that are so low, yes, we got, I guess, a couple years ago, some form of a raise, but the steps were forgotten. And I'm just here to tell you that two years ago, that was $4,000. Last year, that would have been $8,000. And this year, it would be $12,000 that are, at least in our household, that we didn't have. There have been times when we had to go eat at Salvation Army because we could not make it. It was only for a week, but we still had to do it. We've had to eat at Dent and Bent places, go by that, and I think that's how I lost 12 inches of my large intestines. I'm not sure, but I don't want to say anything against that business, just going on record. I bought the cans, it was on me. But I just want you to think about how that $4,000, that could go $100 a week towards extra food. That could be $4,000 where families could drive maybe a more respectable car. It could go a long way just in keeping maybe local businesses afloat that wouldn't have to close down and leave. And the teachers stand in the trenches every day with our students in a myriad of ways. And I love how at the beginning, you showed where businesses are coming and sponsoring different schools to help. That is a great asset. But our teachers need...they need to have a raise, they really do. It's getting really hard out there to make it, and if you could give some consideration to this, I would really appreciate it. This is a brand-new year, and I think this is a big turning point, and I think Marion County has a lot to offer. And this is a great place to live, and many people want to stay. And so I hope that you will help them to be able to do this. Because this is a great place to live. And so I just hope that you'll consider these thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Christine. Ms. Blackadder?
Well, before we go on into our agenda, I just want to recount with this superintendent and with the board. We have one parent request that we research whether or not there was heating at certain N.H. Jones in Ozola. And Mr. Superintendent, you're gonna give us a report of that?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we also had a parent or concerned citizen who was concerned about class size. And if you could work it into our work session so you can go where we are with class size and the actual number of new teachers that were hired last year. Because I know I did go to a new teacher event last year. And if you could bring that to us so that we can be abreast and maybe if something is wrong, at least the board members will understand what it is. And lastly, you already handled the one with Ponteana Heights, and I thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 5.20, student assignment? Submit. I have a motion by Mrs. Ealy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? Just a moment, I gotta go by my script. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, this board policy has been revised to reflect a change to the deadline date for out-of-area school transfer requests and to clarify language throughout the policy.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? And not, is there any discussion, Board? Ms. Stacy?
I have some discussion. I spoke for a long time with Mrs. Crisalka about this today, and she knows I had some concerns. And probably, had it hit me when we scheduled the public hearing that there were this many changes, I guess I just didn't pick it up when, you know, when you're kind of looking to schedule the hearing. And you know what they say about assumptions, I just assumed that we would have some discussion at a workshop about it, and we haven't. And here it is now before us, and we're having a public hearing tonight about it, which is a time when the board can address issues also. I have quite a few issues, and I honestly feel like there's so many changes, we probably should table it and discuss it at a workshop. But we can discuss it tonight, it'll just take a little while. On, if you want to move on to page...I guess, Mrs. Crisalka? Can I ask Mrs. Crisalka to help me?
Mrs. Crisalka, can you come up for us, please?
Thank you. We tried to go over some of my concerns on the phone, but we can't make changes at that level of time. You know, we just have to kind of talk through it now as a board. And I spoke with her about my concerns about on page two of the policy. If you go to page two, it's two of 14. Let me go back up there, I've got it. My cranky computer's not moving as fast as I'd like for it to move. Let me see if I can speed it up a little. Page two. Item B. For the purpose of determining residence, was, has been removed, but the word that concerns me that we've moved is the word "may" now changed to "shall." The home for which the parent last claimed homestead exemption unless sold shall be used for the purpose of determining residence. I shared with Mrs. Crisalka today that the form that you fill out for homestead exemption, actually, one of the factors that can be considered for permanent residency and homestead exemption is where the kids go to school. So it's kind of like, you can use one for the other. Then, and I went over and I shared state statute with her where it actually, again, states that our, the dependent children can also be one of the factors in determining homestead exemption. So my concern here is that for people who, it says that the homestead exemption shall be the factor for determining residence, instead of "may be used," "shall be." Shall being, that's definite. And when you have situations where you might have even a teacher or a person who has winter-type work, you know, they're farmers or whatever they do, what they work, and they have a summer place that they go to, but maybe they go there on weekends, let's say, maybe the lake, let's say Lake Weir. And they have two homes, and at the main working time of the year, they reside at their home in town, but their larger home is maybe on the lake, and they claim their homestead exemption there. But they really don't live there during the main time of the year. And in a case like that, you might have a teacher that has a lake home, and then in the winter, she lives in town because she's close to the school, but her homestead exemption's out of the big lake house, not the small home in town. So therefore, you could end up with that teacher's own children, unless she gets a special assignment, having to go to where the homestead exemption is on the lake because we've removed the word "may" to "shall." And so now, homestead exemption totally drives that. Sometimes people will be living in a home that they've just outgrown, and they haven't been able to sell it, and they want to just move into a rental that's even larger. And they would not be able to do that because it says it's determined by where their last homestead exemption was.
Where their current homestead exemption is.
It said last claimed homestead exemption.
Right.
So if they...
But if you own a home and you're not living in it, my understanding, and Mr. Lake, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is you're not eligible for homestead exemption on that property if you're not living in it.
But if you haven't removed the homestead, it takes, it's once-a-year type thing. So you could still, you know, you could be in it the first of the year, and it doesn't, you know, change until the following year when you take it off, because I don't think they change it in the middle of the year. And it says last claimed homestead exemption. And so they might not even be living in that house. So that's probably the reason originally this board policy had the word "may," because it kind of gave some flexibility for very unusual situations. And now we're saying that basically, if you have a homestead exemption, you have to go to that school. But there's so many variables that can affect it, and I know that that's one thing that does drive it, but also in very unusual circumstances. And which is probably why this board policy wants to use the word "may" be used for the purpose of determining residence, and we've changed it to "shall."
We...the original reason for changing it from "may" to "shall" is to reflect our actual practice. Practice through the reassignment office is that if the parent resides in Marion County and claims homestead exemption on a property, that is considered to be their legal residence. And we talked earlier today about the fact that there are many people who wish to put their child in a school where they do not reside. And if they don't meet any of the criteria, and there are a number of opportunities in this board policy for your child to request an out-of-area. But if they don't meet any of those requirements, we oftentimes have had parents who will rent a property, buy a small property, claim an office as the child's home in order to attend a school to which they are not assigned.
Right.
And so we have to have something that is definitive, that we can point to as, this is your legal address because it's where you've claimed homestead exemption.
Okay, but families have all kinds of unusual circumstances. You could even have, you know, an elderly family that has a big home on Fifth Street where the fam, where the whole fam, you know, the parents own the house, but the grandchildren and the parent, you know, it's kind of like a, they live there to help take care of Grandma, but maybe they own, the only thing they own is a piece of lake property that is in their name, so of course they have homestead exemption. I don't believe in the homestead exemption laws that even states how many days you have to live there anymore. I don't think that's very, I don't even think it's specific on how many days now you have to live there. And so therefore, they could have a home on the lake where they really live right here downtown on Fifth Street in one of the big homes with the grandparents. And so there's just, there's weird circumstances that I hate to see us lock ourselves in where those children definitely live down here on Fifth Street, but they have to go to Lake Weir to school just because that's their only residence.
If that's the only word in this entire policy that's holding you up...
That's not the only word, but that is a word.
We can continue to do as we have done...
Right.
With the word "may" in there. We have required the property where homestead exemption is being claimed... We have required the property where homestead exemption is being claimed as to be the legal residence unless there are circumstances that are covered in this property. For example, if I'm building a home, I haven't claimed homestead exemption on my new home yet, but I want my children to start in the attendance zone where I'm building a home, and I'm going to move into that home during the school year, this policy makes an exception for that. If, if I have lived in a home and I am purchasing another home, and there is a contract for sale, there's an exception for that written into this contract. But absent some of those exceptions, the expectation is if you claim homestead exemption on a property, you are telling the county that that is your primary residence. You're receiving a tax benefit for doing that, and your children are assigned to the school within that area.
Right, right. But I don't believe that if, if a young couple owns only one parcel, and they, so they get homestead exemption, and they might spend some lake weekends, and, you know, weekends on the lake and stuff like that. But they live in a family home with their, you know, with the family. I, I know someone right here that, that's actually in political office that lives in his mom's, in their, in the mom's family home. And there's, and at least the word "may" gives you flexibility for that very unusual circumstance where they can prove that this is the way it is. And I know that you, this word's been in here for a long time, and we've managed with it. But I just...
We felt it was important for people who would read this policy to understand that this is the standard. If you have a property where you are claiming homestead exemption, that is your legal residence. That is where your children are assigned, unless you request an out-of-area through the proper channels. If you request open enrollment through the proper channels instead of kind of going behind the doors.
Right, but there might not be any openings at that school. If, I don't know, I just don't, I just would not want a situation like that where the people have to remove their homestead exemption on their own piece of property just to get their kids in school until we have a board policy change or something. It's, there, there's just, I don't see any sense in locking, locking us down to where we don't have any flexibility, where you say, well, board policy says, because y'all are going to put the monkey back on our back, you know, this is what they said. And I'm saying as a school board member, I don't want to be locked into where someone has to give up their homestead exemption on a house because they live with a family, they're, they're caring for an elderly family member in the fa, old family home just to get their kids in school. I just feel like...
I believe if Mr. Lake were to research this, he would find that if they are not living in that lake property, that they are not entitled to a homestead exemption.
I think if it's their only home, though, and they do spend time there, but they don't have to spend all their time there. I think it, I, I think the homes, because I kind of roughly looked at, pulled up some of the homestead exemption stuff, that it doesn't, that you...
Let's pull it, Nancy, and let's go back because those things are very important.
Yes, Stacy.
And I would like to table it.
I'd be pleased to promptly research the issue, but it's not something that I can just give an off-the-cup answer without...
And I do have other...
If this is going to hold up the movement of this board policy, you know, the whole process of scheduling a public hearing and then waiting two weeks, Brenda, or however long it has to be to advertise and hold a public hearing. If we pull this over the word "may," we're going to be that much further behind. And we've got a, we've got an open enrollment that we need to implement, and we need to implement it now. So I would, I would pull the change if that will let you move forward.
Well, I have a couple of other concerns, though. Okay?
So, Ms. Stacy, I, I, and Ms. Crisalka, rather than, I mean, she first said she would like to table it, and it seems to me like you have a lot more concerns.
Can I, I could, like, fly through them real quick? Because we, she and I talked, and I can just kind of hit, hit them real quick.
But do you think that, that if you met with the attorney and laid out that, those changes to him, and maybe bring it back to us, maybe, and, and he can then meet with Ms. Crisalka?
Well, I can meet with Ms. Crisalka, too. I mean...
We're going to have to start the process all over again, and...
Sixty-eight weeks.
Sixty-eight weeks.
Well, then, let's just go through it. I mean, let's just, let's just go through it. That's my concern, the word "shall." Okay?
That was your principal concern?
No, that's one. If you go to page three...
Excuse me, miss, do you want to take any kind of action on that at this moment in time? Or do you want to go through?
Just kind of hear them and then see if we want to table it and go on, and then...
Nancy, just look, let's take them one by one.
One by one.
Like the "may." That's, that's the issue that we are having, and I really don't think it make a big difference. But I agree with you on that.
Well, she, Ms. Crisalka just said that with that one word, it's...
If that's the pleasure of the board, then that's what I will do.
All right, so, let's, board.
All right, let's move, I'll move quickly.
Miss, a second, Miss Stacy, Ms. Crisalka, Ms. Brenda, what, do we need to vote that, or?
You would need an amendment.
Okay, so we, do I have an amendment?
Do you want to do them all at once, or?
I think you should do them one at a time.
One at a time, so there won't be any confusion. So you want to, do you have a motion to amend this, Stacy?
I'd like a motion to amend page two of the policy under homestead exemption and, and put the word "may" back in that was removed to "shall" and return it back to the word "may."
I need to have a second.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Ms. Stacy and seconded by Ms. King. And is there any discussion?
I'm not that fast.
And that's...
Okay.
This is Stacy and this is King.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, may I have a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like, sign?
Nay. And one I just have a question on that I saw after I talked to you today.
Okay, just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's get through this one first, because...
Okay.
Ms. King and Ms. Stacy, please.
I'll go over there.
Oh, I'm sitting here on the policy. Can you vote for me?
Okay, it's two.
I'm sitting here. I've got the policy held up, and I can't get back.
And how do you wish to be voting?
I want to go on a mission.
And the vote passes five, I mean, four to one.
Four.
Four to one. Okay, so, and next one, Ms. Stacy?
Okay. On page four, I just have a question on this one. You may have a real good, you know, reason for it, and I'm sorry I didn't ask about it today because I missed it. I didn't catch it until just before leaving the house. But on page four, item three, where we, and it may be somewhere else now. Item three, I don't even see a three. Hold on, yes. Transportation shall not be provided by the board for students approved for a diversity reassignment, which I, you know, I understand that, but do we need to remove it? Or do, would they automatically know that?
We, we are moving, if you look back at page three, you will see item A that says, "Majority-to-minority Transfers" is being moved to section four, M1, page seven.
And it does say that transportation won't be included?
And we can go to...
Just so people know that when they apply for it...
Page seven. We've re-titled it, instead of majority-to-minority, we're suggesting that we retitle it, "Diversity Transfers."
Okay.
And what we did in this policy is we made a statement that unless required by law or otherwise indicated in the policy, transportation is not provided. So that we wouldn't have to say it over and over and over.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, then let's go to page five F. Page five, F. F, a request to review the decision of the, the decision the superintendent has been added. It's, it's, basically, board members, this is talking about on these assignments where if someone wants to request a review of the superintendent's designee or whatever, it should be placed on the agenda for the next meeting of the Marion County School Board. We have removed ourselves from completely, we have totally, you know, they've totally usurped our power. When I go to speak to politicians about why the schools are the way they are, what they always do to me is say, Nancy, we give you powers, and you people delegate it to someone else, and, and you end up with no powers because through school board policies, you've just given all your powers away. And we're doing it again here. We did it also, which I'm not even going to fuss about because it's not as big a deal, but on page three, we did it, where the board oversight was removed from out of district. It was page three B, which does, I'm not so worried about that one. The board oversight was removed from the administration, you know, the administration will monitor. But anyway, we removed ourselves from there, which I'm okay with that. That's not a big deal. But on page five, we've again given up our, we've given up our authority completely to others that state statute gives us. And we continue doing that. You know, I've seen a lot of that, and I've pretty much started fussing about it, especially since I whine to the politicians, the state legislators, and they just fire back at me, well, then stop giving up your powers, and you'll be able to do something about these things. And so what I have a problem with is it used to read that if there was, you know, someone requested a review on a decision, that it would be placed on the agenda of the next Marion County School Board. And then item G then says, "Request must be received." Now, it even gives, tells them how to do it for the school board. And then it says, "The board's decision on review shall be final."
Can I, can I address that for you?
Yes.
Starting back on page three...
Okay.
Where you talked about B.
Okay.
It originally said that the board shall monitor, shall continue to monitor inter-district student transfers. That's not something that you all do. It's not a function of, of what board members do.
And that's why I said I didn't have a problem with that.
So we were trying to make this show what happens in reality. The district monitors these students, and if there's an issue, we address it. So that wasn't intended to take your power away.
Right, and that's why I, I read that one and felt like it probably did. That's why I said we've done it there, but I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But...
And on page five, it goes back to what you talked about a moment ago on, on the word "may" and "shall."
Okay.
This painted it into a corner.
Okay.
Every time that somebody wanted to appeal the superintendent's decision about a request, that it will go to the board.
Okay.
By changing it this way, it doesn't prevent them from reaching out to a board member if they have a concern, if they don't like the decision that's made by the designee, which is Mr. Burke, and they don't like the superintendent's solution if they bring it up the chain of command. They can still call any one of you at any time, and you can still bring something before the board to address. We're not trying to take that away from you. We're just trying to take away the expectation that every time there's a conflict, it's going to be put on your board agenda.
Right.
Because we get thousands of these every year. And I'm, I'm not sure how, how many of these have ever come before you, Mr. James and Ms. Boynton, in the time that you've been in here, I would think very few. So I think they're handled by the administration, and this doesn't preclude you from addressing the concern of a parent, but it takes away that expectation that you must.
Right, but it usurps the power again that the board keeps giving up because we have had a situation that board members, I'm sure, are quite familiar with recently, where we all realized we had given up our powers on the Forrest High School situation. And we had, we couldn't do anything about it because we had given up our ability to make a decision. And, and I would like to see on very unusual, like, that's fine if you, you know, the superintendent handles it. But I also want something in here where if someone does come before us with something that just can't be resolved with the superintendent, some way that the board's decision would be final. Because you know what I'm talking about at Forrest High School. I said, oh, you don't, you weren't in here. Anyway, there was a situation there that I believe the board would have made a different decision on based upon the conversation that we had that day, but we couldn't because we had given our powers over to other people and on, on a placement into alternative education. And so when those things happen, it affects children tremendously. And I would like, I don't like in board policy constantly giving up our authority to others. I don't feel we're doing our job when we do that. We are taking, you know, a path where if we don't want to do our job, then we shouldn't run for the job.
Board members, do you all have this policy in front of you? If not, I will read you the original and the suggested, and then you can give me direction.
Number five.
Number five, F.
Page five F and G.
Page five F.
And G.
A request to review.
Tell us how it was before.
Go ahead and read it so that...
Yeah, how it was before, because with the underlying...
It originally said, "A request to review the superintendent's decision may be made..." Hang on, it's hard to do with these lines. "A request to review the superintendent's decision can be made to the superintendent and shall be placed on the agenda for the next meeting of the School Board of Marion County." And then it goes on to say, "Request must be received no less than seven working days prior to a regularly scheduled meeting to be placed on the agenda for that next succeeding meeting. The party seeking review shall be given notice of the date and time when the board will consider the matter. The board's decision on review shall be final." That was the original language.
All right, Mr. James?
My question on this now, we have not had a lot of these.
No.
Okay, so why are we changing it?
Thank you.
Okay, that's my question. Tell me why we're changing it, because we have not had a lot of these to come before us.
We're changing it to try to reflect actual practice, what happens. When Mr. Burke makes a decision and the employees are, or the parents are unhappy with that, they make an appeal to the superintendent. If they're unhappy with that, they talk to a school board member who may talk with the superintendent, and, and ninety-nine percent of the time, the situation is rectified. It doesn't mean that every time there is a request to review a decision, it's going to be placed on a board agenda and addressed at an open board meeting. That was the reason for it.
Mr. James and the board, last, or the beginning of the school term, just before school started, I, I had three parents, three families approach me about a decision that was made where they were denied placement. And I, I know I talked to the superintendent, and then I talked to Mr. Burke. And Mr. Burke then came up with some other alternatives so that they, and they had a choice, more than one school. We may be full here, but now, here are the three that you can choose from. And so we worked it out like that, and, and, and those parents were quite happy. As a matter of fact, one parent did come to the board because I did say we'll bring that problem to the board. The board needs to hear about it. And when we got here, we were able to talk to Mr. Burke and alleviate the problem right away. But that decision that was made, it was put back really in the, the decision in the parent's hand. We gave her the information on why you can't get into the school, you know, it's already full. But we do have these schools, so now you make the choice. And, and that decision, I think it, I think it really worked out very well. And, and Mr. Burke really, really came through in, in looking deep, trying to find a solution for the floor. So that's the only thing that I can say about that policy.
But you've just given me every reason not to change it.
Okay.
You know, possibly, Mr. James, instead of just automatically going on the agenda for the next school board meeting, Ms. Crisalka, you're a very good wordsmith. Is there a way to, to soften that where it doesn't have to be placed on the next agenda that would make you feel more comfortable with it? That it doesn't have to be an automatic thing, because I know you're, you know, very...
I don't have a problem leaving it the way that it was.
Okay.
I was really trying to help you all.
I know, and you do a great job, and I, and I apologize for, and I apologize. I should have, I, I guess, with the crazies in my life, with my husband having kind of a major surgery thing, I probably didn't pay as much close attention as I should have when it came up for, to schedule the public hearing. Because I look at them, and then I go, oh, okay, I just didn't realize it was massive change like this. It didn't really hit me, and so that's my fault. And I'm sorry to be hitting you with it like this because, you know, I would have, had I realized that, I would have requested we have a workshop on it, and we would have done it, and that would have been just the way to handle it. and we would have done it, and that would have been just the way to handle it. But, um, but maybe can we, maybe leave it like this? And then maybe for next year, if we want to, you know, reexamine it again if it's not working for you, then we could change it. But, um, I do apologize.
This section?
Okay, so.
For right now.
Okay. Ms. Stacy, can you give us that in the form of an amendment so that the other board members can work on it?
New F and new G. We're going to keep the wording the way it was prior to any changes regarding parent requests to review the decision of the superintendent's designee.
Thank you.
I meant to retain wording on F and G on page five is my short version. Do that.
Okay.
Okay. That's how I'll get the rest of it.
All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to, um, to re, to.
Amended as stated.
Amended as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been promptly moved by Ms. Stacy and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any more discussion on it? Okay, may I have a vote, please? All those in favor say aye.
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 Of the amendment change. And a opposed like sign?
Again, I apologize for my husband.
I am always happy to, to review anything at a, at a work session. If you just let me know, I'm happy to do that.
I know, and that's the way I should have handled it. But I just did not realize there were this many changes. When I glanced at it when we scheduled the public hearing, um, I did not realize there were this many changes. I only have one more concern, and it's on page six.
Just a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a moment.
I'm trying to nudge along quickly.
We haven't gotten the vote up, up yet. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy, is your vote, Ms. Stacy?
Ms. Stacy.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still on my page. I'm not going to leave it for the vote for me. I'm sorry.
And Ms. Stacy, before you move away from page five, at the very bottom is where it talks about the transportation, as I indicated. That it says, "Unless required by state or federal statute or otherwise noted below, no, no transportation is provided."
And the vote is in, and the motion passed five zero. Thank you. Ms. Stacy again?
Okay, on page six, um, let me go to the top of it. It's item number one, and this is just a clarification that I need some help with. So I'll even understand our policy are set myself because there might not be a, I mean, it might be fine the way you've got it, but, um.
You say letter, number one, is it a letter K?
Is that.
K one or I above?
Is that I?
I guess it's an I.
Okay.
Question. On the approval for reassignment in out-of-area school does not mean that they will be approved to participate in varsity athletics. I know that we're going to be doing out-of-area, um, open enrollment and all kinds of stuff, you know. I don't know what the Florida High School Athletic Association's ruling is on this. And you can help me with that because I don't know.
We wrote it the way that we did because we know that the Florida High School Athletic Association makes those determinations. And their rules can change from year to year to year. So we felt that it was better to write it this way that just indicates that just because we have approved you to go to an out-of-area school does not necessarily mean that the FHSAA will approve you to play athletics. You have to get the ruling from them.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you for clarifying that. So that's fine, that's good. Thank you.
Is that all, Ms. Stacy? Okay, and thank you, Ms. Crisalka.
Thank you.
And so board, now we're back to.
And I owe you a box of candy, Ms. Crisalka, thank you.
No candy.
A box of fruit?
Green tea.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, board, we're back. Is there no more, any discussion from any other? So we're back to, may I have a vote on the adoption of the revised board policy five point two zero?
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. Uh, are those in favors, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
That was a big policy. Thank you.
And that motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy six point one one one, definition of personnel? Mr. Superintendent?
Get a motion and a second first.
Excuse me, just busy here. May I have a motion?
Send it.
Second.
The motion has been, uh, it's been motioned by Ms. Ely and seconded by Mr. James.
Board members, this board policy has been revised to clarify wording as well as updates to statutory authority and laws implemented.
I declare public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Mr. Chris.
I will get this to you in just a second. Chris Alphella, 2020 Northeast 43rd Street. I just wanted to ask a quick question regarding six point one one. Ms. Oliver, is this, the email that you sent me this afternoon, is that going to have a bearing on this for consideration for instructional support personnel? Because I know six point one one has instructional support personnel in it. And I received an email from the Human Resource Director about changing the instructional support definition, I, I would imagine. And you had asked us if we had any issues. Uh, and I'm just wondering if we, if, I haven't had a chance to look at it because I got it late this afternoon. And I don't, I'd be hesitant to have the board approve something when, I don't know if it involves, uh, that, so.
Um, I'll respond to you, Mr. Alphella. Uh, again, the.
Ms. Crisalka, can you come up too? Thank you.
The, um, the striking of the word instructional support personnel, that all went together, and that was in reference to M E S P, not the I S P version of the instructional bargaining unit.
Okay, that's what.
The I S P position will still be covered under the instructional. Then there are administrative, and then there are support personnel. So we have instructional, administrative, and support personnel who work within our district.
So then my question was just to make sure that what I got from Ms. Oliver today wasn't going to be, that's not being voted on tonight?
No.
That change of definition?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Board, okay?
Board? All right. Board, if, no, no discussion? So may I have a vote, please? All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Opposed, like sign?
Brendan, would you vote for me, please? I logged out. Could you vote for me? I think I've got a problem too, again. I think it unlocked me. I'm with it.
And the, uh, I've got, the, the policy is, um, the vote is five zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy six point five zero, leave of absence? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
This board policy has been revised to clarify eligibility of uncompensated leave.
I declare public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to, anyone present who wishes to address the board in this revised board policy? Board, do we have any discussion? May I have the vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to, to adopt the new job classification description for hazardous waste technician? May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? It's promptly moved by Mr., Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
This new job classification description allows for the hiring of a qualified support person to oversee training, reporting, review, oversight, and implementation of all policies and procedures as they relate to the Department of Environmental Protection.
I declare public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this new job classification description? Board, is there any discussion? May I have the vote? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to rename the football stadium at Bellevue High School to the Brent Hall Field at the Strike Zone? May I have a motion?
So moved.
The motion has been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent?
The renaming of the football stadium Brent Hall Field at the Strike Zone will honor the lifetime achievements of Coach Hall, who coached at Forrest High School from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-eight, winning two state championships, and then coaching at Bellevue High School from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and one.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the renaming of the football stadium at Bellevue High School? Board, any discussion?
There's not, um, I, I hope there's not any discussion. I'll just give you a little history. If you're familiar with Marion County, and you're familiar with what we do, or what we've had in the past, you should be familiar with Brent Hall. And I think all of us at some point recognize the contribution that he's made to this community. It is without a doubt, if I was to look around this room, you would know that Brent Hall had an impact on our, on us as a, as a colleagues in education, but as, on the number of young people that he, he worked with. If you look at the petitions and things that's signed, it's a job well done for him. And we need to recognize these people.
I would say too that, um, I was at Forrest High School under Coach Hall as we won our state championships, and that was the best time of our lives, I'm sure. So, but may I have a vote? May I call for the vote, please? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the proposed boundary changes to East Marion and Ocala Springs Elementary School?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. James and. Seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
The proposed boundary changes are for transportation expediency and better utilization of school facilities. These changes impact less than six students in grades kindergarten through twelve.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the proposed boundary changes to East Marion and Ocala Springs Elementary Schools? Board, any discussion? I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye? And opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to adopt the following donations? One thousand dollars to Dr. N H Jones from Lockheed Martin. Four thousand dollars to Dr. N H Jones Elementary School from Duke Energy. Ten thousand dollars to Dr. N H Jones El- Elementary School from Dr. N H Jones Parent Organization. Two thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars to Donnellan High School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini Grant, Micater Techie, Techie Timbo. Fourteen thousand dollars to Donnellan High School from Donnellan High School Baseball Boosters, Inc. In-kind services valued at five thousand dollars to Donnellan High School for construction of a baseball batting cage from Robert Ripple, Inc. Two thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents to Eighth Street Elementary School from Eighth Street Elementary School PTO. Ten thousand dollars to Evergreen Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini Grant Twenty First Century Learners. Two thousand dollars to Forrest High School from Ocala Jeep Club of Florida. Two thousand dollars to Forrest High School from Market of Marion. One thousand dollars to Hillcrest Public School from the Fraternal Order of Eagles. One thousand dollars to Howard Middle School from the town of Lady Lake. Five thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA. Two thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and one cent to Marion Technical Institute from the Public Education Foundation. Four thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents to North Marion High School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini Grant Bringing Technology, Technology Out the Classroom. One thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to North Marion Middle School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini Grant That Sounds New. One thousand dollars to Reddick Colia Elementary School from Michael Whitaker. One thousand dollars to Stanton Welsdale Elementary School from the S N J Hall Family Trust. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from One Blood. Fifteen hundred dollars to Vanguard High School from Covenant Software Consultant, Inc. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from ASM Rom- Roman, M D L L C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
So the motion is made by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Ms. Stacy, tonight is your night.
Oh, my goodness.
To thank everyone for this.
And Ms. Ely has a grand total of seventy-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars so graciously given by the people of this community to our public schools. Well, you know, when you hear about people complaining about the schools, you sure have a lot of people also supporting the schools. And I want to thank everyone because there's so many things that we can't give to the teachers and we can't give to the schools, the little things that they need to make the student's day go well. And the neat thing about money going directly to the schools is that as school board members, we know it's going to the students because the teachers of that school will make sure, and so will the parents. And so we know it's going to go straight into a classroom. And, um, I'm so appreciative, and my gratitude is just immeasurable because it's amazing to me that in one board meeting, nearly seventy-five thousand dollars has been given by the generous people, the citizens of Marion County, to our public schools, and so thank you.
And, and board, I, I forgot the most important thing. We need to accept those donations, so. May I have a vote, please? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? And that motion passes five zero. And I know, um, like Ms. Stacy said, that is just coming from our community. That says a lot, and we really appreciate your support. Thank you. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, at nine a.m. The following topics will be discussed. Update on, on Reddick Colia water issue. District system review. DESF contract. Annual, annual review of the charter schools. Review of. of the charter schools, review of Marion Charter School renewal application, board directors on 2016, their request proposal for insurance help, and the Millet Oversight Committee. Upon the adjournment of tonight's meeting, an executive session will be held to discuss collective bargaining. And this has been a... Our week started out with meetings, and I know two of our board members went to the legislative session that was over at CF. Can you give me an update, or the board an update, Mrs. King and Ms. Stacy? Ms. King first.
I sure can. Well, yesterday, Nancy and I, we did attend the legislative delegation meetings, and I have to say that it was my first time there. And so, it was quite a learning experience, but to watch Nancy go up there and be an advocate for our school systems, it was quite an experience, and it was positive. And I look forward to going again. There's a lot to learn from our community.
Well, thank you, Ms. King.
It's always great to go and speak with the people that we know well. We all know, those of us that have been active in the political scene for many, many years, we know these people. And so, it's nice to go and talk with them as a group, and they know who we are, and they know we're serious, and they know we're not asking for, you know, anything. What I did, I basically, I spoke from my position, and then I read. Mr. Christian provided the neatest, most compact little flyer, and it was so perfect, I just had to read it word for word, exactly the way he did it, and shared our concerns, you know, the way he had it congested down. And I believe they were really listening. You know, some of the people, they go up and they're, you know, I think they really heard us. And I shared with them that I would just be requesting something very, very simple from them, that they maybe just send us down some common sense from up there, because it's long overdue. And they kind of sat up and listened, and then we went from there. And so, hopefully, they heard that, but it was kind of a long afternoon.
I can imagine. And I'm gonna ask the superintendent to give an update. Usually, Mr., and this is so exciting for me, that I went with the superintendent to Orlando to the Central Florida Coalition meeting, and usually, Mr. James goes. So, Mr. James, when I went to find my seat, your name was there. You know? But it was such an interesting meeting, and I also weighed heavily on the input and thoughts from our superintendent, so if he can give us a little update on what happened.
I'll try to give you a little synopsis. I don't have any notes prepared, but Mrs. Borton and I did travel to the Coalition. Again, the Coalition is a combination of ten different Central Florida counties that represent almost 900,000 students. We believe as a unified voice, we certainly have a meaningful political voice in our state. Our guest yesterday was Senator Simmons, who is from the Central Florida Orange County area, who happens to serve also on the Education Appropriation Committee and also on the Education Committee. He challenged this group to go another step. This group had already prepared a legislative agenda similar to yours, a little short of the stance that some of you have taken, but it was a similar concern about the volume of assessments, and that our students are being required to take both on a local basis and also on a state basis. The senator then said, "Thank you for this document, but how about giving me some legislation, giving me some specific terminology to use?" Superintendent Walt Griffin from Seminole County volunteered to coordinate that effort, and tomorrow morning, there is a conference call being held, and I have three people sitting in on that conference call to help him actually drive some legislation. We will also be using and portions of the Florida Association of District School Superintendents' draft proposal on how to address assessment also. And the essence of that, and also the essence of your proposal also, is to let's take a pause from the implications and from what's happening as a result of our testing. We believe in accountability, we believe in assessment, but let's wait and see if our new Florida Standards Assessment is validated and does become a good test that we can eventually use for teacher evaluation, use for school grades, use for district grades, use for promotion and retention. And until that time, let's just take a breather on that. I'm looking forward to the results of that. I'm not sure exactly what Senator Simmons or Senator Monford can do, but we're certainly hopeful that they can move the legislature in a way that will benefit us all.
Thank you. I think that's moving a step in the right direction, allowing us, as those districts, to come together and try to help draft the statutory itself. So, I was quite pleased, because it is addressing the testing concerns, you know, that the parents have and that we all have as members of the community and of the board. So, I look forward to hearing a report from that, on that, Mr. Superintendent.
Just fine.
Thank you. Now, board members, do you have any comments? Mr. James?
Yes. A couple of things. Monday and Tuesday, I'm part of the Florida High Schools Athletic Associations. I'm one of the board members from the School Board Association, and we really looked at some things that involved our students and their eligibility. And one of the things I came away with the meeting was, as I spoke with the superintendent this morning about the possibility, well, I know we need to have a work session to look at the size of our high schools. And one of my big concerns about the size of our high school is that we have a super high school, and when I say a super high school, they're larger than any in the district. And I want to look at the advantages and disadvantages of being a super high school like that. And when I say that, I'm referring to Westport, most of you know that. And Westport, to me, if we don't discuss these things, will be put at a considerable disadvantage, because all of their contests will be going toward, into Orlando. When I say that, it's Opocah, Evans High School, and et cetera. And with just the changing of some lines, we may be able to bring all of our big high schools, such as Forest and Vanguard, in line to try and help them in a certain way, in a way. That may not seem like that's important, but it is when you go in there every year and you get, I'm not gonna say beat up, but you go in there and you don't play against your local schools because you are so much bigger than they are. There's some things that we need to discuss as a board, and I know it's gonna hurt a lot of people feeling, but we need to really look at how big we're getting with that one school. I can understand it if all of us schools were getting that size, because it will create an additional hardship on Westport. But it will also give them some advantages, but it'll also have a lot of disadvantages. And we, as a board, really need to look at what we're doing in those schools. That's important. The next thing I attended was I had a chance to work with, on the Student Code of Conduct, and Mark Villanella, and I want to commend you and your staff for really putting on a tremendous workshop. The thing that I would like to suggest, as we begin to work this way, and I spoke with the superintendent as well, is that I would like for us to look at how, because how we deal with students when they come into the discipline office, in reference to the fact that I would like for them, for us to start looking at those kids and trying to charter, or chart them, or counsel them, or get some information on them in terms of what occupation or what interests do they have. Because when kids go into the discipline office, is usually a certain portion of your kids that may not be in tune with everything that's going on in the classroom, but he may have some interest that we need to really garner or try and build on as he moves through the system. I feel very strongly that we need to start looking at these kids in middle school all the way through high school, and try and get a vocational setting for them. You know, being a part of the, being in the dean's office for a long time, we had some really good kids that came through the dean's office, and they just was not interested in what we were doing in high school. But when you look at them today, those kids are very successful. They didn't go to college, but they're very successful. Look at some of the contractors. And when I think of some of them, I look at Big D Roofing and all those guys, those guys are doing extremely well. But they came through the office, and what I would like for us to do, when we start addressing our vocational component that we're looking at, look at it where we could start counseling and identifying kids that have interest even from the middle school all the way through. So it was a very good meeting. I think Mark and his group did an excellent job of getting input from all of the constituents, and it was a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. I agree with you on that. Thank you. So, if we could have a work session?
Well, there's two. I would like to really look at the size of our schools, to see if we can do something about that.
Yes.
And I would really look at, would like to look at a component, so we can identify these youngsters. And it's not a bad thing, now, because all I'm trying to say is that we need to identify them, so we can channel them in the right direction in terms of, put it together. And that should be part of our vision when we look at vocational training.
I agree with you, because I mean, look at the size of our school, that's important, but also, looking at our students and their interest, that's so important, and knowing that every child is not going to go to college. They may not have that desire, but if you can connect them early, and I know that's where you want to connect them early, with that vote tech component, I think that would be an advantage for our community.
Okay.
That's a very good idea. Thank you for bringing it to us. Mrs. King?
Well, I've been, since I'm a new school board member, I've made a few rounds and stuff, but I was invited to MTI. They had like a mock hearing, and it was for We Are the People, and Mr. Doug Oswald put it together, and basically, he selected, we volunteered, he had some judges, and I happened to be one, and Mr. Yancey, our former superintendent, was also with us, and then we had also a judge. These students were outstanding. I could not believe what I saw. We had high school students that came in, they were dressed to, they were just dressed to impress, and when they were speaking, they were very articulate. And also, when they finished their hearing, they came up and they shook our hands, they looked us in the eye, and then, just the other day, when I went to my mailbox, I had letters where they thanked me for being a judge, and they spoke of what they felt they did well, but they also let me know what their weaknesses were, and they were glad to hear that advice, because they feel that they're gonna take that into the work world with them. And so, I was very impressed, and that was great. I've also had the chance to visit Reddick and North Marion High. It was interesting, when I first went to Reddick Elementary, on the boards, they would have like Marion High School, or in some classes, they would have University of Florida, or Santa Fe, or C. F., they had different colleges. And so, Ms. Dickie explained to me that these students are making goals of where they want to attend school. And I believe for kindergarten and first grade, it would be high school, and then for third and fifth, it would be the colleges. So I was like, oh, that was great, and it was a good pleasant experience. Well, on Friday, I was attending North Marion High, and then, we're thirty, I was there about thirty minutes, and we're out there with these first graders coming off the school bus to see their goal, to see where they want to attend. And when we walked around, they were seeing the Air Force ROTC, they were with the Ag Department, there was a pig, there were goats, there was a baby goat, there's automotive, you know? So these students were seeing where they were, but they were also seeing where they wanted to go. And I have seen a lot of good things in our community, and I just wanted to express that.
Thank you so much. Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I've also been a judge a couple of times for that, for We the People, and in speaking with the students, when they would finish, 100% of them, and there was a good number of kids that did it, in that class over there at MTI, 100% of them said this should be mandated in the district. I know, in the district, we have the different history, we have the couple of different history options, but they all said, "We learned more from this than any class," because it's all about the Constitution, and it was, you know, such a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I'm serious, I mean, I think that might be a point. This is something that we might need to look at as a board later on. And with Mr. James, you're speaking about people who don't do so well in school, but you see them later and they're doing great. A person comes to mind named Steve Jobs, who didn't do very well in school, was a discipline problem in school, and went on to start Apple Computers, and became very, very successful. And it would have been interesting to know what his goals, you know, what he liked when he was sitting in the discipline office, when he was in school, to find out what, because he ended up being something great. And one of the things that I spoke with at the legislative hearing, or the legislative delegation, was the fact that, you know, in the old days, my belief was that assessments were very, very necessary, and I still believe that. But as time's gone on, and I've seen what's happened since my kids were in school, to where we now almost have a school system of children who love to learn and hate school, because it seems like the education system is leaning towards a sanctions and punishment organization instead of a place to learn. They memorize for the test, but then they gain no knowledge. So then they go away with no knowledge that they've got, because their time was spent memorizing for a test. And so, and I shared with the legislators yesterday, that many of our vocational education programs and our electives are dying, because so many of these kids that should be in these programs are sitting in reading remediation. And are we really getting out of the reading remediation the benefits? Because some of these children, if they're not reading by that level, they're not gonna have a lot of improvement, to where maybe they should be in their electives and in their vocational education training, instead of sitting in that reading remediation. And so, you know, and they were looking kind of puzzled, like we haven't even looked at it that way before. So, you know, we want to have these, we want to have great vocational education programs, but what kids are gonna be in them if they're sitting in reading remediation, learning how to not read, because they can't learn to read yet? I mean, they've gone as far as they can go. So, those are some of the concerns that, you know, I would like to keep hammering on the legislators, how it's affecting these kids, you know? All these ideas that seem great on paper, put them in remediation and remediate them to death, but there's a point where it's just negligible, the help that it's giving these kids, where the elective class would serve them so much better. And so, and Mr. James, I've also got a vocational education school that I'm gonna be calling about tomorrow, I believe it's in New Hampshire, and someone in the community's told me about it, and so, I'm gonna find out all I can about that, and I'll be sharing it with our education people, so we can get this show on the road. Mr. Tom can't do it all by himself, and I think this proactive school board, we can make some calls for him and pass the information on. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Ms. Ely?
Looks like you guys have covered just about everything. I wanted to remind everybody that next Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and it's more than just a day off. Our children, I've been to several schools where I can see that they are learning about the importance of Martin Luther King and what he did, and we need to continue to educate our children. There will be a march on Silver Springs Boulevard. I invite people to attend that, if possible, on Monday morning, if the weather is good. But that really, a lot of children attend that, and they need to listen to our community leaders about how we value that holiday, and how we value what he did to our nation. The other thing I wanted to tell you, talk to you about, was as a former teacher, I know that January, February, and March are the most intense, critical teaching, learning time of the entire year, and I know our teachers are working very, very hard to try to get all of the curriculum in before assessments start. So, I respect your time, January, February, and March, and I know that you're working as hard as you can in the schools, and any support you can get from the principals, from volunteers, so that you can do your job and make it all happen, get all of that curriculum completed before spring. Please, please do so, and know that you have my blessing, and I love for... and I'd love for us to help you any way we can, but I know you've got a job ahead of you and good luck to you and work hard. Thank you.
Mr. Lake, you have anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Tomlin?
Yes, I do have a couple of items for you. Board members and those listening tonight in the audience, at our last board meeting in the early part of December, a community member came before you and expressed concern regarding the licensure of our school psychologists that are, that are employed by the Marion County School System. And there are two issues that we needed to at least share with you, where we stand on this. One issue is an issue of licensure, or getting a license to practice as a psychologist. And another is to be certified or certification to be a license, to be a psychologist. School psychologists in the state of Florida are required to hold certification by the state and all of our school psychologists do hold that certification. Some of those psychologists, whether they be employed by the school system, may also have a license, whether they keep that license. So it's two different things. The license permits someone that is in this field to actually hang a shingle, do counseling, family counseling or someone, something like that. The inference was made that our folks are not certified, are not appropriate, we're not appropriately staffed. I wanted to clear that up. We are appropriately staffed and certified. Second issue, another parent came to and complained and had not shared anything with us, but complained that their student was not being tested for E S E according to the prescribed and appropriate timelines. Is when that parent spoke to you, that timeline, that official timeline had not begun. That parent had not signed any document requesting any official testing. Mr. Villanello has met with that individual and our district staff and the school staff at that particular school are working with that family. The appropriate paperwork has been signed. The testing situation has begun and the school system was not out of line nor any employees out of line when that parent came and speak to you, spoke to us last time. Ms. Ely has already mentioned on Martin Luther King Day, one of the ramifications of that is of course for the four days next week, Tuesday through Friday, we'll be working ten hour days. So we'll be here early in the morning and late in the afternoon for you. And I certainly would encourage you as individual board members, hopefully can participate in some of the many activities that are, go on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And then finally, an update regarding our negotiations with the City of Ocala. You know that a judge has ordered us to meet, directed us, might be a better word. And I can share with you that representatives of your board did meet with the city of representation in December. We agreed that the city engineer would meet with Marion County Public School Representative to discuss the appropriate approach to take. We don't have an engineer that handles that specific issue. The city does. We have secured the services of civil engineer, Robert Walpole. He will be meeting for the first time with the city engineer, I believe, as early as next week. He's already met with us, given us a request for proposal that we're dealing with. Mrs. Boss and Ellison, I met with him. Everything's appropriate with him. He's a certified civil engineer, as is his company. And I'll certainly keep you posted on the developments of that positive and fruitful negotiation. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Blocker?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I, I was able to go over to Howard Academy. I had a very, you know, strong interest in athletics and as, and as I met with Dr. DeWes, I did a small tour of Howard Academy and I found that we house this program called the Phoenix Program and it's, it's an opportunity for children who dropped out to get back in. But, but also it is another component and that component is they so they're on a construction site, come and go to their classes right on our campus and it is such a, it was a joy to see the participation of the students involved in it. So I wanted to tell you about that. And then I wanna thank Ms. King and Mrs. Stacy for going to, representing us at the legislative delegation. And that's where they actually presented our resolution. You know, it was all about how we felt about the testing, how we felt about even, you know, the teachers' evaluation and everything. And we wanted our legislators to really know how we felt and I thank you all for going and presenting that. Also, Happy New Year to everyone. I really do thank you all, hope you all had a wonderful holiday. And now that the New Year's on, let's just make some positive things happen for us. So that's all I really wanted to say. So now, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through December the twelfth, two thousand and fourteen. In addition to an early reentry request and a request by parent J D fifteen forty, are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Board, may I have a motion to approve the expulsions of students J D fifteen dash twenty-eight, J D fifteen dash twenty-nine, J D fifteen dash thirty, J D fifteen dash thirty-one, J D fifteen dash thirty-two, J D fifteen dash thirty-three, J D fifteen dash thirty-four, J D fifteen dash thirty-five, J D fifteen dash thirty-six, J D fifteen dash thirty-seven, J D fifteen dash thirty-eight, J D fifteen dash thirty-nine, J D fifteen dash forty-one and J D fifteen dash forty-two with educational services through the first semester of the two thousand fifteen to two thousand and sixteen school year. May I have a motion?
Somebody.
Second?
Second.
This, the motion was made by Ms. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? May I, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And that motion passes five to zero. In order to protect the privacy of students, I will be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to further discussing student discipline matters. Parents will then have an opportunity to address the board. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting at seven forty-seven.